All right, good evening. The time is 5:00 PM. It is June sixteenth, two thousand and twenty five. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Argyle ISD Board of Trustees. At this time we will determine if a quorum is present.
Leona McDade present.
Josh Western present.
Rich McDowell present.
Liam Artho present.
Matt Slaton present.
Craig Oxford present.
I, Sam Slaton, present. We do have a quorum established. It is still five p.m. and we will adjourn to executive session.
Thank you for joining us today.
All right, good evening. Time's six nineteen PM. We have returned from executive session. At this time, we're gonna have an impromptu pledge of allegiance from our middle school volleyball ladies. We have Ms. Reese McDowell and Ms. Ava Holland and Ms. Presley Mosley if you want to come up and lead us in our pledges of allegiance. We appreciate y'all being here during summer conditioning.
All right, good evening. Time's six nineteen PM. We have returned from executive session.
At this time, we're gonna have an impromptu pledge of allegiance from our middle school volleyball ladies. We have Ms. Reese McDowell and Ms. Ava Holland and Ms. Presley Mosley if you want to come up and lead us in our pledges of allegiance. We appreciate y'all being here during summer conditioning.
Honored the Texas flag. There we go.
There we go.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you guys.
Appreciate y'all hanging out and doing that. Run. I'll run.
Gosh.
All right, Mr. Hawksworth, if you would lead us in our opening prayer, please?
Sure. Dear Lord, thank you for this time tonight for us to come together and do what's in the best interest of the students of this district. Please be with those students and help them have a great summer and recharge. Please be with their parents and give them patience as their students are home for the summer. Help us get back to school and get everything prepared for a great school year. We love you, Lord. Amen.
Amen. All right, at this time, we'll move into our public forum comment portion of the meeting. I'm gonna do my reading and wet my whistle here real quick. All right, we're now moving into the public forum portion of tonight's meeting. Please note that board policy requires speakers to sign up in person before the meeting is called to order. During this portion of the meeting, board members will listen to comments, but as the designated spokesperson, only the president may respond to the speaker if needed and refer concerns to the appropriate administrator. Speakers can comment on agenda items, but trustees will not be able to discuss the items until they are before the board during the meeting. Board policy BED local provides the presiding officer the ability to adjust the time allotted per speaker for effective meeting management. Pursuant to that policy, an individual's comments to the board at tonight's meeting shall not exceed five minutes. The presiding officer may reduce the allotted time for each individual to speak to no less than one minute for effective meeting management. Speakers are not allowed to receive time from other individuals. Tonight, each speaker will receive five minutes. Specific complaints about individual district personnel are to be processed through the district's grievance policies. As set out in district policies DBA, FNG, and/or GF, speakers are not permitted to refer to individual students or employees by name during public comment period. Additionally, if you have a pending grievance that may come before the board in a level three hearing, please refrain from addressing the topic of your grievance except through the grievance process. Per board policy BED and this board's operating procedures, the board will not allow disruption of the board meeting by members of the public. If after one warning from the presiding officer, any person continues to disrupt the meeting by words or actions, the person will be removed from the meeting. Thank you. Thank you. All right, we have two individuals signed up this evening. First speaking is Joel Rolston.
Might have to adjust some of my comments because of the things you just mentioned about mentioning names. So if I stumble for a second, I apologize. But as I begin, I want to point out what you just mentioned in your prayer that you desire to do what's best for all students. So I would like for you guys to consider that when you look at my daughter, a prospective student. So I'm gonna have to read fast. My name is Joel Rolston. This is my daughter. She's fifteen years old. She'll be sixteen in December. So pray for me as I'm teaching her how to drive. She owns her own small business. She bought and boards her own horse with the profits from this business. She's been homeschooled through various programs and private schools for the entirety of her life and is excited as we told her that we were gonna send her to Argyle next year as a sophomore. We have three kids in Argyle South. This is my beautiful wife of twenty years. I won't mention her name because she's teaching in Argyle South next year, so I can follow rules. We moved to this area actually seven years ago with the sole purpose of if we ever got to this point of putting our kids in public school, that we wanted to be in Argyle. So we're excited about that. And I want to just real quickly read you guys' mission statement. Argyle ISD is a district built on tradition and values, is committed to providing an exceptional educational experience for each student, each student, through meaningful opportunities in a safe and caring environment. So as I speak tonight, I want to ask if our current policy is advocating for this potential student. Is she being provided exceptional educational experiences? Is she being given meaningful opportunities in a caring environment? I'm advocating for her, for her to have that opportunity to be a part of a diverse learning path that our students get to take. And I'm specifically speaking on our district's policy on awarding academic credit for students transferring from homeschool or unaccredited private schools. We've had the privilege of meeting with Dr. Jordan. She was very helpful in educating us on y'all's policy. The counselors have been very kind. She told us that the policy was to take credit by exam through K through twelve or she could start as a freshman at fifteen and hopefully take those same tests to move forward throughout the year. Right now, we don't allow any credit for private or homeschool that's not accredited, even if the curriculum meets or exceeds state academic requirements. This means a student like this who has spent years diligently working is being told that none of her work counts. She has to start over, retake classes, or be placed in a lower grade than her age and ability warrant. Current policy only awards credit through these credit by exams that are designed, as I spoke with Texas Tech, to accelerate students, not to place them appropriately. These credit by exams, if I look at English One, for example, they're required to read multiple novels and multiple short stories in order to prepare for the exam. They only can pass it if they do that, and these requirements are not better novels than what she's read. They're not even Argyle ISD novels. They're just random novels specifically for this test. So this student has read many more novels, actually sophomore-level novels, that even an honors English teacher in Argyle ISD has looked at and said they're above her grade level. This test is not in the spirit of seeing if she's prepared to be a sophomore. It's making her redo work. She would be required to take six exams, okay, first semester, second semester, six exams just to still be behind, to be allowed to be a sophomore. That doesn't even account for geometry, Spanish one and two, and geography that she's taken from legitimate sources that are just not accredited. Okay, I understand the need for academic integrity to ensure that our credits reflect real learning, but I believe our current policy is too rigid and out of date and it fails to recognize the reality of high-quality, structured homeschooling and private schools that many families, including mine, have chosen to take. Okay, I spoke with the TEA many, many times over the past month, and this is fully supported and allowed within the distinctions of the TEA. Okay, I'm asking that the school board consider that this student, as the state allows, to award her credit for the outstanding work that she's done up until this point. Okay, the current policy and this current decision affects the rest of her life. Okay, it affects her ability to have friends of her own age in school. It affects her ability to work for dual credit. It affects her ability to prepare for sophomore honors classes. It affects her ability to graduate before she's the age of nineteen, okay?
All right, good evening, time's six nineteen PM. We have returned from executive session. At this time, we're gonna have an impromptu pledge of allegiance from our middle school volleyball ladies. We have Ms. Reese McDowell, and Ms. Ava Holland, and Ms. Presley Mosley. If you want to come up and lead us in our pledges of allegiance. We appreciate y'all being here during summer conditioning. Whenever y'all ready, ladies.
Honor the Texas flag. There we go.
There we go.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate y'all hanging out and doing that. Run, I'll run. All right, Mr. Hawksworth, if you would lead us in our opening prayer, please?
Sure. Dear Lord, thank you for this time tonight, for us to come together and do what's in the best interest of the students of this district. Please be with those students and help them have a great summer and recharge. Please be with their parents and give them patience as their students are home for the summer. Help us get back to school and get everything prepared for a great school year. We love you, Lord, amen.
Amen. All right, at this time, we'll move into our public forum comment portion of the meeting. And I'm gonna do my reading and wet my whistle here real quick. All right, we're now moving into the public forum portion of tonight's meeting. Please note that board policy requires speakers to sign up in person before the meeting is called to order. During this portion of the meeting, board members will listen to comments, but as the designated spokesperson, only the president may respond to the speaker if needed and refer concerns to the appropriate administrator. Speakers can comment on agenda items, but trustees will not be able to discuss the items until they are before the board during the meeting. Board policy BED local provides the presiding officer the ability to adjust the time allotted per speaker for effective meeting management. Pursuant to that policy, an individual's comments to the board at tonight's meeting shall not exceed five minutes. The presiding officer may reduce the allotted time for each individual to speak to no less than one minute for effective meeting management. Speakers are not allowed to receive time from other individuals. Tonight, each speaker will receive five minutes. Specific complaints about individual district personnel are to be processed through the district's grievance policies. As set out in district policies DBA, FNG, and/or GF, speakers are not permitted to refer to individual students or employees by name during public comment period. Additionally, if you have a pending grievance that may come before the board in a level three hearing, please refrain from addressing the topic of your grievance except through the grievance process. Per board policy BED and this board's operating procedures, the board will not allow disruption of the board meeting by members of the public. If after one warning from the presiding officer, any person continues to disrupt the meeting by words or actions, the person will be removed from the meeting. Thank you, thank you. All right, we have two individuals signed up this evening. First speaking is Joel Rolston.
Might have to adjust some of my comments because of the things you just mentioned about mentioning names. So if I stumble for a second, I apologize. But as I begin, I want to point out what you just mentioned in your prayer, that you desire to do what's best for all students. So I would like for you guys to consider that when you look at my daughter, a prospective student. So I'm gonna have to read fast. My name is Joel Rolston, this is my daughter. She's fifteen years old, she'll be sixteen in December. So pray for me as I'm teaching her how to drive. She owns her own small business. She bought and boards her own horse with the profits from this business. She's been homeschooled through various programs and private schools for the entirety of her life and is excited as we told her that we were gonna send her to Argyle next year as a sophomore. We have three kids in Argyle South. This is my beautiful wife of twenty years. I won't mention her name because she's teaching in Argyle South next year, so I can follow rules. We moved to this area actually seven years ago with the sole purpose of, if we ever got to this point of putting our kids in public school, that we wanted to be in Argyle. So we're excited about that. And I want to just real quickly read you guys' mission statement. Argyle ISD is a district built on tradition and values, is committed to providing an exceptional educational experience for each student, each student, through meaningful opportunities in a safe and caring environment. So as I speak tonight, I want to ask if our current policy is advocating for this potential student. Is she being provided exceptional educational experiences? Is she being given meaningful opportunities in a caring environment? I'm advocating for her, for her to have that opportunity to be a part of a diverse learning path that our students get to take. And I'm specifically speaking on our district's policy on awarding academic credit for students transferring from homeschool or unaccredited private schools. We've had the privilege of meeting with Dr. Jordan. She was very helpful in educating us on y'all's policy. The counselors have been very kind. She told us that the policy was to take credit by exam through K through twelve, or she could start as a freshman at fifteen and hopefully take those same tests to move forward throughout the year. Right now, we don't allow any credit for private or homeschool that's not accredited, even if the curriculum meets or exceeds state academic requirements. This means a student like this, who has spent years diligently working, is being told that none of her work counts, she has to start over, retake classes, or be placed in a lower grade than her age and ability warrant. Current policy only awards credit through these credit by exams that are designed, as I spoke with Texas Tech, to accelerate students, not to place them appropriately. These credit by exams, if I look at English one, for example, they're required to read multiple novels and multiple short stories in order to prepare for the exam. They only can pass it if they do that. And these requirements are not better novels than what she's read. They're not even Argyle ISD novels, they're just random novels specifically for this test. So this student has read many more novels, actually sophomore-level novels, that even an honors English teacher in Argyle ISD has looked at and said they're above her grade level. This test is not in the spirit of seeing if she's prepared to be a sophomore, it's making her redo work. She would be required to take six exams, okay? First semester, second semester, six exams, just to still be behind, to be allowed to be a sophomore. That doesn't even account for geometry, Spanish one and two, and geography that she's taken from legitimate sources that are just not accredited. Okay, I understand the need for academic integrity to ensure that our credits reflect real learning, but I believe our current policy is too rigid and out of date and it fails to recognize the reality of high-quality, structured homeschooling and private schools that many families, including mine, have chosen to take. Okay, I spoke with the TEA many, many times over the past month, and this is fully supported and allowed within the distinctions of the TEA. Okay, I'm asking that the school board consider that this student, that as the state allows, to award her credit for the outstanding work that she's done up until this point. Okay, the current policy and this current decision
One minute.
affects the rest of her life, okay? It affects her ability to have friends of her own age in school. It affects her ability to work for dual credit. It affects her ability to prepare for sophomore honors classes. It affects her ability to graduate before she's the age of nineteen, okay? It alters her entire future, the decision that you make. Okay, this affects no one but her, and it alters her future. Okay, I've spoken to many other districts in the area, and all of them have gone away from the CBE for awarding credit in situations like this because they've realized that it's an unfair assessment to put a student through retaking tests over the summer just to be with the age-appropriate grade. We, as parents, decided to homeschool her, and now she's being punished by the school district for a parent's decision. In closing, I ask that you would consider not just the letter of the policy, but the spirit of education itself. That learning can happen in many forms, and that all students deserve the right to move forward and not backwards. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Nikki, are you speaking?
I was just speaking as he ran out of time.
You're signed up, if you want five minutes.
I do have nothing prepared or written. However, from her standpoint, the school that we did put her in, that apparently is not accepted. An ER doctor ran the science department. A professor who teaches in a college ASU was her biology teacher, along with the biology teacher that is accredited to teach in the state of Texas. So she is credentialed as a biology teacher to teach children. Same with her geometry teacher, her algebra teacher. So just so you guys know, we didn't put her in classes under me, where I'm teaching in kindergarten. We put her under really great professors and teachers that are credentialed in the state of Texas. So they do know TEES. So I just wanted to leave you guys with that. We're not just a random homeschool family that just, I teach them at home. So, hope that helps a little bit.
Thank you. That concludes our public forum portion of tonight's meeting. Is it appropriate to wish Chief Davis a happy birthday?
Yes.
Chief Davis, happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Chief Davis. Glad you could come here for your birthday party.
Thanks for spending your evening with us.
I'm here.
All right.
Twenty-six, twenty-seven, or?
Twenty-nine, ninety-five and change.
Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. For our June twenty-twenty-five donations, from Argyle West Elementary PTA, seven thousand five hundred and fifty-one dollars and forty cents for progress learning, from ABC, five hundred and forty-nine dollars for banquet desserts, and the Alex Betzhold Memorial Fund, twelve thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars for painting of memorial basketball court. Total June donations, twenty thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars and forty cents. Does anyone have any questions on any of the consent items?
Just on the AYSA agreement. I know, I wrote, I read in there about construction areas being limited. Does that include the middle school field that we were on today? Is that being used?
Not next year, it's part of the construction site still.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's all I want to make sure of.
It looks inviting, but it's an active construction site.
It's an active construction site.
Yep. Okay. Any other questions on any of the consent items? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent items as presented.
So moved.
Dr. McDavid, motion to approve, I have a second.
Second.
Mr. Matthew Slate with a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Here's our first report. Energy Management.
Mr. Nathan Moses.
So hard not to say Coach Moses, but Mr. Energy Management Moses.
I thought I was doing season ticket renewals, is this wrong?
You can do those soon.
That's a bad fever dream.
Different flight you're spinning right now.
Hey, listen, thanks for having me. I'm really excited to give y'all a report of where we are so far this year. Just to start out, we've, I've kind of double-checked this with Liz and her team and our accounts payable, but I'm looking at right now, I feel like using last year as our baseline to compare to, we're looking at right now about a hundred thousand dollars in savings from the two twenty, whatever that is, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four year to our current year. So that's from our September statement, which would have been August, through our June statements that would have been our May year. So what I'd love to do is just kind of walk you through a little bit of what we put in place to monitor our electricity and our spending throughout the district. So this is a snapshot of basically the week after Easter. So this would have been Easter Sunday, I believe, would have been the twentieth. So looking at this right here, this is basically right off of, it's not basically, it's a snapshot off of CoServ's website. So anybody that's on the co-op, whether they have a residential or a commercial meter, all right, they would be able to pull up information that looks just like this. So you know, on your bill each month, it lays out basically the last thirteen months and will compare, you know, the previous year and this year. I'm going each week looking through all of our properties to make sure there's no outliers. So I chose this particular one because there is a pretty clear outlier here. You can see those four waves right there, those are four days of electricity that you see there. So what I'm looking for is Monday was a holiday. That's what it looks like when we're able to shut the district down. So you can see that we have a small bit of weekend usage there on Sunday. Mondays by far are most minimized used, and then we go Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and you can see Saturday, it's kind of scattered a little bit throughout the day. So a handful of things I'm looking here, mainly, I don't want to see the opposite of this, right? I don't want to see a plateau where it just starts at the beginning of the week and stays on throughout the week. I want to see it dropping off like you see right there. I'm also just making sure we don't have any large spikes in there because those spikes is where we set our demand limit, which becomes a multiplier in our bill every month. So again, this is our high school, which is why you see kind of those little plateaus there at the end of the school age, each day, because we've just, you know, this, what, late spring, we had all kinds of activities still going with all of our different extracurriculars throughout the district. Okay? So this is, again, I go through every campus looking at this. I use our enviramatics, our climat tech programs, just to make sure that everything's operating correctly. I'm trying to catch anything that may be running and needs repairs, anything like that, and then I work with our team to stay on top of those, okay? So to me, this is pretty exciting because this is something that's gonna carry over to the future. So if I could remind you real quick of the fall, when Tommy presented for the operations team, I showed you a few graphs there, and those were all from NRG. All of this information's from CoServ. So at the time, I was trying to apply for a program that NRG offers that's called the RED program. It's basically where they send us, every week I'd get a report from them that's telling me it's either the green, a yellow, or a red day. Red would be a potential for high use, right? And what they would do is, they were gonna buy back basically our electricity or pay us for not using it during those peak times. Peak times, four-thirty to eight PM, okay? So that's when traditional workday, everybody's coming home, units are firing up everywhere, that's when the grid's really stressed, right? We hear that this time of year. So they were gonna pay us to basically cut off our electricity. The graphs that Tommy showed you back then, we'd do a great job of that already, okay? So those two campuses for NRG are the sixth-grade center and Hilltop, with those being elementary-type buildings, we cut off and do a great job. So we didn't even qualify for that, okay? So what it did was it led me to go right back to CoServ and go, okay, do they offer anything like this? And although they don't have a specific program, what they do offer is a time of use rate and then their normal public building rate, okay? So this again is just the high school. Everything I'm providing tonight's the high school because it's our biggest consumer, it's by far our biggest building. And if you look here, what I did is I basically, they, I asked them to analyze each of our campuses, really each of our meters, and what we've got back was, you know, this sample throughout the district. That's basically a theoretical generation of what the two, you know, analyzing, you know, comparing the two rates of, on a typical year, what we spend. So you can see there, that's basically projections of what the public building rate would be for the high school and then what this time of use rate would be. And just at the high school, it was potentially somewhere between eleven and twelve thousand dollars a year. If you look at all the other campuses that have kids on them, like the middle school, West, South, JRE, which are on your CoServ, it's potentially twenty thousand dollars a year just by switching over to this different rate plan. So that was a no-brainer. We started moving that in October, November. I actually just added the admin building to that as well. So we're looking to continue to make savings through this. So even though we failed to qualify for one program, it actually led us to probably greater savings through another. So that was, that was fun, fine for me, if you will. So this is what I keep up with. So this is just mine, I personally made this. You don't have to read through all the numbers. So this is just a Google sheet where I formatted it to where every month, and I'll show you the next page where I pull all this from, but it's just pretty straightforward. If we're saving money, if it's a negative number, it's green. If we're not saving money, it is red. You'll see, I think, a West up there, that bill's in the middle of the month, so we haven't received it. That's why that one's blank up there. But we've done a pretty good job, especially up there at the top, which are our campuses where we have kids attending, where I actually control those through the system. We do a good job. What I'll be working on this next year is kind of coming up with plans to catch some of these other, maybe buildings that we don't operate through our, one of our computer programs, just kind of working with staff there and figuring out ways to save where we can. But that's that hundred and one thousand that I was telling you that as of now, just on CoServ, we saved. It's a little bit different if we throw in Atmos Energy as well as NRG, okay? All right, and to wrap that up, this is just where, I want y'all to see where I'm pulling the information off of. So again, that's a snapshot right off of the smart hub that is CoServ's website, and that's just their usage comparison. So you can see I pulled up the May twenty twenty-four bill, the May twenty twenty-five bill. I gave you a snapshot of the bill, so if you see that twenty-five, three, sixty-seven, you'll see that under the column for May twenty twenty-five. It's comparing that to May of twenty twenty-four, and we saved, I mean, it's minimal this past month of two hundred and sixty-eight dollars, but I mean, there's some things in there, if you'll look, there's two more days added in that, so our savings are a little better than what they would. And also, through, you know, members of this community, they've helped me kind of learn and keep track. You know, one of our, one of our people that's helped us out and speaks a lot pretty is involved. He, we called it our back-of-the-napkin math, and that's, you know, Mr. Combs. I lean on him quite a bit here in the district. So we came up with that just to make sure that the weather wasn't really the benefiting factor here, that we're actually saving money. And again, pretty excited about what the summer has for us and see where we, when, in this first year on. Got it? So, any questions, are we good?
Number one, this is amazing, great job. You mentioned early on enviramatics and climat tech. How many schools do we still have climat tech?
One, West.
And when is, are we planning to change when that contract's up?
We talked about it, yes, we have.
It's still challenging, or has it gotten better?
The, can I go into detail on that, do you mind? The biggest difference is, so like, right now, JRE, we've got our summer school program. So if we say we want an extra camp added in there, okay? So I can just add one extra room at the end of the hallway at JRE right now. What I run into at West is I turn on every classroom. So, you know, we have, one of the other things we're doing, one of the things I'm excited about this summer is we've really worked with our janitorial staff. I check with them every day, and we're, you know, we're finding out what areas they're cleaning, so we have air in that operating while they clean, and then we're running it overnight to kind of dry the carpets and those kind of things. West, with climat tech, it's, every classroom's on. So that's the benefit to, you know, to enviramatics is I can, it's much more detailed. I can control one of those at a time where, instead of the blanket that I have with climat tech.
Is that what you're referring to when you said non-computer programs?
No, so if you want to go backwards one, okay? So not all of our buildings are on enviramatics, right? So, or climat tech. So for instance, we have a few buildings that are still, I mean, they're just operated with your typical, you know, thermostat on the wall. So like our concession stand, right? So that's what I'm talking about. I don't run the concession stand, when they go in, we turn the concession stands on. So things like that. It's also that, you know, a concession stand's a great example. We wouldn't want that on a time of use rate because we're running it after hours, right? We want to use it during the school day, and then it drop off and we not use any electricity. So one of the things y'all will hear is I'm gonna just, you know, talk as much as I can. The more we can minimize our electricity after four-thirty, that four-thirty to eight PM, which is really just, as much as I can cut things off at the end of school day, we're gonna, you know, we'll benefit from it. Now again, that's not where students are, of course, we'll keep it going. And I didn't mean to cut you off, what do you got?
All the non-computer program buildings are things like concession stands or standalone, not necessarily student facilities?
Correct. Yes, sir. But everywhere where we have students, we're running with a computer program, and I oversee that.
It's a great job, I don't, there's nothing else to say.
Awesome. Appreciate it.
Have you had any board members go around to campuses and closing blinds?
So I didn't mean to really brag on a particular board member who walked Hilltop Elementary and shut down all of the blinds. I mean, I just, the community let me know.
Yeah.
It wasn't you, Josh. It wasn't him that let me know, I'll just put it down.
We all have to put up with it.
Coach Moses, we do appreciate everything you've done, and your enthusiasm is what's so great about all that. You at least make it a lot of fun to shut everything down every holiday. You do, we appreciate you very much because it's not the most popular position, person to say, turn everything off and your air's going off at four-thirty. So we appreciate your efforts, it's made a huge difference this year.
All right, Mr. Cohen.
Good evening. Got the monthly update on construction projects for you. So starting here with the stadium tonight, got a shot looking at the press box continuing to go vertical. They are probably two weeks from completing that, I believe, very close anyway. They're kind of working on the northern stair tower. So when you look at it, it's kind of a little lopsided right now, and they're working their way up on that north side. Here's just a different angle, looking from the other backside of it. In this, you can also see what we refer to as concession stand D. That's our southwest corner, so that has been dried in. Don't have a roof on it yet, but they are now able to work inside the building, and the water will stay out. This shot is looking from our visitor's side, so you can see they've made great progress on the visitor's side grandstands. That should be complete over the next two weeks, and we should see them having deliveries and starting on the home side. Here, another shot, this is looking at the concession stand over on the visitor's side. So they are working their way to the top. It actually has roof joists, maybe even deck on it at this point now. So it's not far from being in the dry. About the time it will probably stop raining. We hope. This is a shot looking at the indoor activity center. So they're making good progress here. It's a little bit slower with the weather, since they are erecting this building from the inside, rather than setting up a crane on the outside, which eventually would affect our parking that we need when we get back to school in August. So it's going a little bit slower than we'd like, but again, if this rain will stop, then we will see great strides made there. And then, of course, you can see here in the front of this photo, that's the one little area of fire lane paving that we have left to do. This will be done and open before August first this year, when we start all of the summer workouts. So we will have that entrance open again. This is another shot, this is the northwest concession stand on the visitor's side. So we saw the one that had been dried in earlier. So this is the one on the north end of the grandstands, and it is currently now in the dry. Just some of our key milestones, just as placeholders. Home grandstand install early summer, that should start sometime in the next two weeks. And then we will see the turf field, which we closed for the month of June, so we can do some work around the edges, the perimeter, get the sidewalks in, do some work on the track edges, retaining walls, a lot of underground conduit we had to do. So that will be reopened for July first. So when they come back from their week off of summer conditioning, they'll have that turf field back. Look ahead, we should finish the summer work, so that's got to do with the turf field that we closed for June. The track will remain closed for the month of July. So we will be wrapping all that up and then giving it all back to them August, so they can use the track. the track and field. Going to continue and complete the press box erection, the structural steel. Put the remaining roofs on all concession stands. That will be roofing, not just in the drive, but the roof. Visitor grandstands should be complete over the next two weeks, and then we'll start on the visitor's side canopy. So that'll be our entrance canopies, like you see here in this photo. That's the home side, but they'll begin on the visitor's side and then move over to this one. Are there any questions?
Just curious, how many, if you know the number, compare the visitor's side number of seats to what we have at the middle school versus what's going to be at the new stadium, roughly?
Can tell you. Give me a second.
Don't expect you to have it in your head.
No, I don't have it in my head, but I can get close. So we've got about 2,200 seats over here on the visitor's side, and I believe we're around 3,000 to 3,200. I think it's the number of total seats.
Total seats at 370.
So we have, you know, two-thirds of the total seats just on the visitor's side here.
Got you.
So our total seat count here is going to be around 7,500. It's about a 70-30 split.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Cohen.
Thank you. Moving into the middle school. We did have a beam signing this morning. Went very well. Had great weather for it. It was a little hot, but it wasn't raining, and it wasn't muddy, so we had a great space to do it on the track and the end of the turf in the D. So in this photo, you can see we're looking at the gymnasiums. So Storm Shelter Gymnasium's one on the right, the one on the left is just the second gymnasium. This is a shot looking north, so you can see the, the field where we had our beam signing this morning at the north end there. They will start on this south end with irrigation and landscape over the summer, and we should be getting some trees and shrubs and those kind of things planted probably in October, which is a better time of year to plant those things, anyway. So we're going to be getting the site from the road. We'll be getting cleaned up and looking complete while the construction continues in the back on the buildings. This shot is just showing the tennis court pads, so we'll have eight courts there. So this is just the select fill. They're getting ready to drill piers for light poles, and then they'll start working on slabs. This should be finished in the next six to eight weeks. This shot is looking at the band area of the building. So this is on the far north side. So here we've got three band hall spaces, percussion, band hall, and a larger ensemble This is our classroom wing. So these are the last slabs they have to pour. It'll be for our classroom wing. These are also the easiest to complete. They're less intense, if you will, than the gymnasiums with the block or the kitchen with all the plumbing that goes into it. So that's why they do this last, even though it's kind of what we need first. It is the least intense, and that's the reason. Just an overall shot, looking southwest. You can see the parking and drives 100% complete here. Continue with building slabs, steel erection. They've got metal studs going up in areas that should be sheathing on the outside here very quickly. We've got some brick already going on the gymnasium. So we're going to see a lot of progress by the end of the summer out there. Should see a nearly complete building shell. Look ahead, CMU, and that would be all of it. Gymnasiums and our locker room areas complete by the end of the month. We're going to begin the site fence, which goes out towards 407 and the walks out there. Again, the concept being we're going to work our way from the road back, getting things finished soon as we can. Continue with irrigation and landscape in that same vein, getting the front buttoned up and complete, so we're not down to the wire next year trying to rush and get that in before classes. Going to continue with steel erection, moving around over into areas A and B once they get slabs poured. So that's our classroom areas, A and B. And then they'll continue with our MEP rough-in, so they'll be hanging duct and running all the conduit, running all the overhead plumbing. And then here, we've got just some milestone dates showing our permit date that we received building permit in December. Dry-in building, set RTUs should happen here in the next few months. Elevator scheduled for spring install and substantial completion around July, hopefully a little bit sooner. Looking to move some furniture in and have it done before teachers start coming in on top of us. Any questions on middle school?
Looks good.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Dr. Carpenter?
Yeah. So as Mr. Cohen mentioned, we did have the beam signing this morning. We had a great turnout. It was a little warm, but we had lots of students and families out there. Just want to again thank Corgan Architects and Poe Construction for always being great partners and pulling off the beam signing. So had a really good ceremony there. Just a few things going on in the summer. I know our students may be out. We've had a lot of students in camps, but we've had Summer Learning Academy. The last week of May, I believe, Dr. Jordan, is that correct? We had over 400 teachers coming through there at different times that week, and just want to, you know, a special thank you to Dr. Jordan, her team, specifically Kelly Dilliman, Lisa Watson, Cecilia Vaughn. They did an incredible job designing that week. And then, most importantly, our own teachers were teaching those sessions, which is just another way that iron sharpens iron. So really appreciate your team's effort there. And I know we were over in the hallways. The teachers had a lot of great things to say about that. So just want to celebrate that. It's exciting to feel that energy over there, because it was the first week they were out, and they were all excited about what they were learning, and then they were going to go take summer break and then come back. So appreciate that very much. And then we had our first crop of new hires last week. Dr. Daniel's team led that, and I think we had 38 or 40, I believe, in the room, and that was our first one. Lots of excitement in the room. Everybody's excited about being at Argyle, and so really appreciate that group coming in, and we'll have a couple more of those sessions. We're in great shape on our campuses as far as hiring. Our principals have had plenty in their applicant pools, which is a good thing to have. And so they are definitely in a great place as far as having physicians hired for the, ready for the school year. And then also want to announce just recently, we had Ms. Lumston at the middle school has hired Laura Rizvi as assistant principal, and she was the Argyle South, I believe ESL's Laura here? No, she's not here. She, Argyle South ESL teacher. So we're very excited for Laura. She was part of our Aspiring Leaders Academy that went on throughout last year, that Dr. Daniel and Dr. Jordan led, and so very excited to have her in that position moving forward. And then just a couple of say the dates. I know it's still June, but it will be here before you know it. We have Eagle Bash August 2nd, and the first day of school is August 12th. So we will blink, and it will be here. So enjoy the rest of your summer. Few things district news-wise. We had the 89 Texas Legislative Session end on June 2nd. There were about 170, I believe, education-related bills that were passed. We've been, all of us have been to several sessions, virtually and in-person, listening to a lot of the, the interpretation of those bills. They haven't all been signed by the governor yet, but he has until June 22nd to do so. And lots of these new statutes will take effect beginning this summer, for sure September 1. So there's a lot of things for us to process and train staff on, and work that the board's going to have to do between now and school starting as far as some policies. So just a few things that I think are very important for parents to know. Obviously, House Bill 2, which was the historic funding bill, we're going to talk about in a little bit. I just want to thank publicly Representatives Hopper, Hayes, and Little, and then Senator Parker. At the same time, they, you know, while we didn't get everything we asked for and hoped for in public ed, we definitely had a great progress. And so because of that historic bill, we're able to have the compensation conversation we're going to have tonight. And then while we await implementation for some of those bills, we'll be, you know, having those conversations. I hope to do an update in July with some of the highlights. But just a few things affecting not only Argyle ISD, but students across the state. House Bill 1481, it's a student cellphone ban. So the board will be tasked with writing a policy that is board policy for pre-K through 12 cellphones restrictions throughout the entire school day, including smartphones, smartwatches, tablets, and headphones. So that'll be something that you'll be working through in August before we come back to school. Library material oversight, the Ten Commandments in the classrooms. Districts are now required to display Ten Commandments in each classroom if they're donated. So that's kind of like the "In God We Trust" signs. That's coming into play. The House Bill 6, Classroom Discipline Reform, which is going to give teachers, students of chronic behavioral disruptions, clear rights for them as teachers to remove persistent disruptive students. So we'll be working through that with our staff. And then Senate Bill 12, which is the expansion to parental rights, is going to strengthen some parental right-related curriculum transparency, records of student access, opting in and out of processes, restrictions on DEI and gender identity topics, and then reporting requirements for facility usage and policy. So there's a lot for us to unpack and as we prepare for next year, but we will continue to provide updates as we are getting those out of the state level. So we'll continue to monitor that, and then we'll be bringing the board some policies that are time-sensitive for school to start, and then throughout the year, you'll see some more adjustments moving forward with some of the things coming out of, out of Austin. And then the one bill that did not make its way through at the last hour was House Bill 4, and that was the reform on assessment. And it was in a great place. However, the House and the Senate both had very, very, very differing opinions on what that should look like. The Senate version was discussed publicly as a way to restrict districts from filing suit regarding accountability. The House side was really trying to reform assessment in its purity, and they just could not get to a point, and they ran out of time. So we do expect that to come back the next session, but right now, House Bill 4, the star remains the same as it has been in the past. And then just some upcoming things for the community. We will have several facility naming processes coming this fall with new buildings, transitioning to two middle schools, two high schools. And then we're kicking off our transition teams for those transitions this, this summer, actually. And then we'll be looking at doing quarterly updates with the board and public as we move into next year on all those different topics, from athletic programming to fine arts programming to course selections to staffing. There's lots of areas that we'll be working on. So looking forward to that.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Carpenter.
You're welcome.
Anyone have any questions for Dr. Carpenter? All right. We'll move on.
Out of respect for Dr. Jordan, I don't have any questions.
Noted. Thank you, Mr. Restrom. Ms. Stewart, you got a information-only budget amendment?
Yes, sir. Okay. This is only our second budget amendment for this fiscal year. If you remember, I believe we talked about it in February and then acted on it in March. We amended the budget with all of the increased students after the first semester. We looked at the whole semester. What we have now is we're amending through the fifth, six weeks. At the time that we created this, we didn't yet have the six-six weeks data, which we do now, and we'll work on that for the next one. But this takes us through the end of the fifth, six weeks, which gets us really close to our numbers for the end of the year. It focuses only on the general fund, but it's basically updating revenue on the ADA and special populations, and then just a few other areas that we see that we aren't either over or underperforming for the year. And then for the expenditures, we're looking mainly at three expenditures. It's going to be maintenance and operations, transportation and administration. Maintenance and operations and transportation, both this year have seen a much higher need than was planned in supplies and repairs and different items, and just higher costs all across the board for all of those areas. And then in administration, we do have some higher-than-planned legal bills that are in there that we're anticipating for through the end of the year. Do you mind going to the next page? I'm sorry, just scroll down from that one. Yeah. Should be page... There you go. Okay. So the first page is the revenue. Prior year taxes, is that something that we've had to, had some negatives in for the last couple of years? That's kind of a newer item to have some negatives. We aren't the only district. Most districts are seeing that around, especially Ditten County. Right now, we are in the negatives. We're going to bring that down to a zero budget at this point. We are seeing a little bit more in penalties and interest. Interest income is still going strong, some more in donations, but then the largest one is in the foundation school program. There, the additional revenue in the student populations and the ADA that we're anticipating. So that altogether, that's about 726,000 increase. Go down the next slide for me. Next page. Okay, expenditures. This is where we're talking about, again, in function 34 and in function 51, this is where we're seeing the impact in some repairs, higher-than-anticipated repairs and the cost of supplies. So 130,000 is what we feel like will get us through on the student transportation, 116,000 on the maintenance and operation. And then in the general administration, when we talked about legal fees, it's the majority there, and that's 60,000 is what we're estimating to take us through the end of the year. Again, that brings us up to about 306,000 for a total ending number of about a $420,000 budget surplus. And y'all have not heard that word in a while, especially when we're talking about the 24, 25 fiscal year, but that's what we're looking at at this point in time. We will have another budget amendment. When we bring this back to you for action next month, we will already be talking about our final budget amendment in information only. We have one major item outstanding right now. We talked, we mentioned that along the way, and that's with our taxable values that were turned into the controller. And we asked DCAD to go back and do a self-audit and correct some of those items where it affects us in hold harmless. It looks like, and we won't get the information back from the state until sometime in August, which isn't timely for us, but we're using some help in estimating that. It looks like it could be another million dollars in hold harmless for us that we're not counting on at this point. And that's just from having our data corrected that was sent in back in the fall incorrectly by the appraisal district. And that's just, again, it's strictly on the hold harmless data and where that state funding comes into play. It's a year-long process almost before you actually get the actual numbers back, when you do have to do some sort of appeal or self-audit on it. Typically, you know, by the end of January, but again, since we had to turn in some corrections or ask for the correction to be turned in on our behalf, it will be a little while before we have that data. Do you have any questions on the one that's here tonight? All right. Thank you. We'll bring that back to you next month then for potential action. All right, student nutrition meal prices. So every summer, in preparation for the upcoming school year, review our student nutrition meal prices and look at any changes for next year or for the future year. There is the Pay Lunch Equity Tool that is required to be used for those campuses that are on the national school program. That tool has not been published yet for next year, so these are estimates at this point in time. So these may change a little bit before they come back to you for action next month, but we did want to at least bring you what we felt like would be an estimate, a good estimate at this point in time. So there are some increases there. At elementary, we're looking at 10 cents on breakfast, 25 cents on lunch. On the secondary campuses and the adult meals, we're looking at the middle school and sixth grade center of 10 cents at breakfast and 25 cents at lunch. And then at high school, 10 cents at breakfast again, 25 cents at lunch, and then no increase on the market or the made-to-order deli. And again, these are estimates at this point in time until that tool is published, and we can run some, some different data and make sure that we are bringing you the correct information by next month. Do you have any questions on that?
Does it keep us self-funding?
It does keep us self-funded. That student nutrition program has been self-funded for many, many years, and they continue to operate that way, and that really helps out our general fund.
All right.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Liz.
So our next presentation, we, come on up, ladies. So I want to give just a little background into how this kind of became something we wanted to share with the board. This spring or early, kind of late winter, I was out on campuses just having some conversations with staff, things that were going well, things that we're needing, we were needing to address. And one of the things that we have been, and you as a board had noticed during looking at withdrawal numbers, especially at the high school, is losing some students to online virtual schools. And so these ladies had been studying that data themselves and noticed some concerns of, that we weren't able, able to serve these students, and they came to me with an idea. And we sat down, Dr. Jordan, we all kind of met with them later in April, and this is what they brought us. So we're very excited for them to, to bring their ideas and talk about how we can help our students. So, turn it over to y'all.
Thank you. Thank you for letting us present tonight. Let's get right into it. Okay. So TEA has made some allowances for a program they call Flexible School Day. So it's, it allows for a reduced school day, just four hours. However, it still allows districts to receive their full ADA daily funding for those students. So even with this, even though it's reduced time, they're still receiving their funding. So it provides a self-contained classroom with self-paced learning in an online setting. So it provides a self-contained classroom with self-paced learning in an online setting. So still at our school, just a little bit different setting. We are proposing that Argyle establish its own Flexible School Day program for those at-risk students living in our district. So these are our students. It could be managed or overseen by one principal, and I feel like there are a lot of benefits. But specifically academically, it will benefit our students that are struggling to meet graduation requirements on time with their cohort. In addition, it allows the district to receive funding that we're currently losing. So we are always tracking this data.
I think one of the things, we go back to that screen, one of the things that y'all shared that I think meant a lot as you, that spoke volumes to me was that when we don't have these students in our schools, we can't support them in the way from a counseling standpoint. And you may get to that, but I think that's very important, that when we lose them to an online school, because that's what's best for them at the time, we lose them from being able to support them in some other areas.
Right. So I'm sure Dr. Quast and Ms. McGuire will talk much more about that, but yes, these are our students. Obviously, our end goal is graduation, but we support them in a lot of different ways in those years, ninth through twelfth grade. And so this would allow us, yes, to continue to provide some of that. So we are always tracking this data all the time, every year. However, this past school year, these are the students who, at some point, either leading up to the twenty-four, twenty-five school year or throughout that school year, have withdrawn from our district. Fifty-six percent, a little over fifty-six percent, went to a very similar learning environment. Another public school, maybe a private school, still a four- or five-day-a-week multi-class in-person learning environment, very similar to ours. However, forty percent left to go to a virtual or an online program. So that represents forty-eight students, obviously with over sixteen hundred this past year. Forty-eight isn't a huge number, however, that number is increasing every year. And we're not the only district seeing this. This is very common across all districts. Everyone that I've spoken to, this is a very common thing happening. But, and there's a list of reasons there, and of those forty-eight kids, they probably all have a unique reason. And not all of them, not all forty-eight necessarily, could be recovered in this program, but I do believe a lot could be. So it's not just about a handful of individual cases. That number is rising quickly. And so we believe that by bringing a program like this in-house, Argyle I S D can continue to keep these students, keep servicing these students, whether it's through sped, counseling, different programs we provide, and still get them either caught up, caught back up with their cohort and back into our regular setting or fulfill their graduation requirements.
Thank you, Ms. Lemish.
All right, so she kind of touched a little bit on the eligibility of the students. The F S D program would target our juniors and seniors that have already passed their E O C exams but are struggling to complete their remaining credits, whether that be because of the traditional timeframe or the setting. This includes students that need scheduling flexibility, and they may be recovering from extended medical treatment. They may be students that have fallen behind due to family circumstances or moves. Students would enter through principal or counselor recommendation, M T S S or special education referral, or through self or parent request. This would allow us to capture those students before they consider leaving our district. We would be able to understand their needs prior to that exit. So there's an application process. This systematic application process would allow us to ensure appropriate placement and maintain integrity of the program. Our students would be identified through their existing support systems within the I S D or within their family environment. And we would gather formal recommendations. We would hold a placement meeting that would include the F S D principal, their counselor, the student themselves, and their parents. Through this, we would provide an individualized learning plan with a structured four-hour schedule. And so when they entered into the Flexible School Day learning environment, they would have a structured schedule to follow. They would also have that support that they may not have in an outside online setting. This would uphold the accountability for our academic progress, and it would meet state funding requirements. So there are two program pathways that this could offer, and it's designed to support students in Argyle I S D within both of those pathways and preserve the funding that benefits those students. So the short-term placement, it provides temporary support for students that are transitioning from medical treatment, students that may need credit recovery for life circumstances. But the ideal situation would be they would be going back into the mainstream classroom. The long-term placement would support students with significant challenges who need alternate settings and a self-paced learning environment. This would help them reach graduation and remain within our district. Both of these pathways retain our students and provides the flexible support within the high academic standards that we offer here.
So at A H S, we strive to ensure that every student receives a personalized education that prepares them for future success. Recognizing that each student's path is different, this program offers the flexibility to meet individual goals while enabling the students to still graduate as distinguished level of achievement and still earn their C C M R point. So for budget implications, to effectively implement this program, these are some of the things that we've came up with that we would need. So for staffing, we would need a halftime teacher of record. While it isn't mandatory, a special education certification would be preferred for this teacher to ensure that we can adequately support all learners that may enroll with this program. Technology and licensing, so we would need to procure computer workstations and secure a site license for edgenuity. This would be the proposed online learning platform that we would suggest. Currently, right now, our district uses Apex for credit recovery and online coursework. However, we propose transitioning to edgenuity just because it has a lot more classes that we offer at our school, and it just gives the kids more opportunity of classes to take. For training, both of the assigned teacher and the program administrator would be required to complete the training to ensure that they know how to use edgenuity. And then for administrator support, to recognize the additional responsibilities that would be associated with overseeing this program, we would recommend providing a stipend for the administrator assigned to this role. So expected outcomes, Ms. Lemish and Dr. Quast have both talked about this a lot, but essentially both pathways are flexible learning and accomplish the key goals, which would be retaining students who might otherwise leave for alternative programs and provide the flexible support of our students needed to succeed, all while maintaining our high academic standards in Argyle and maintaining our graduation rate.
Great job, ladies. Don't go anywhere, because there may be some questions.
Can you go back one slide, please?
And Apex is already in the budget, and so this edgenuity would replace Apex. Edgenuity is gonna cost more than Apex, but there is already a line item, correct? Because we already have some.
Yes, ma'am.
And Apex currently is being used for credit recovery, which is just, okay, that's what I thought. In summer school, okay.
And is this an annual cost or a one-time?
Annual.
It'd be an annual. So it's software licensing, yes, ma'am.
I think we're currently paying around eight thousand a year for Apex. It's a cost per license, and it's an unlimited cost, or unlimited users' cost.
This would allow us to assign classes as needed rather than purchase licenses.
And the workstations, how different are they from the other computers that the one-to-one students are using?
It's just monitors and keyboard and mouse setup that they plug their Chromebook into.
Okay.
It would allow them to have the opportunity to have a larger screen to do some of the bigger projects.
So the workstation, are just the added hardware for?
Yes, sir.
Things like science labs might be hard to do on a smaller phone screen, and so we thought a bigger screen would allow them better visibility for those types of things.
And edg-, oh, sorry. Edgenuity is really good because they have like videos, and it actually teaches the students as they go, so it could kind of give some kids the opportunity to like split their screen with like the assignment and the lecture notes as it is, so they can work those stuff ways.
How many, and let me just interrupt and say, I love the idea. So thank you for bringing this to us. And how many classrooms, I mean, again, if we're looking at last year's numbers, there are forty-eight. You know, I don't know if you guys could estimate how many of those forty-eight would have probably stayed. But with the four-hour school day, you know, is that a four-hour block that you're trying to get everybody in at the same time? Or is it rolling throughout the day for classroom utilization purposes?
Good question. To start, it would be one block in the morning, and that way we're using a part-time teacher rather than a full F T E. But in the classroom itself, we may, we will, the intention is for us to be able to identify those students before they're exiting, before they're thinking about exiting. And so if we are able to capture those students, it's completely possible we could have up to thirty kids in it next year.
Okay, listen.
Go right ahead.
I swore myself to secrecy. I made it to nine C before I started.
You did a great job. It's okay. I was waiting for you.
But y'all had such a good idea, I had to speak up.
You need to.
And so here's what I like about the idea, and I want to, this is more to be on the soapbox than the question, is what you, what I wrote down here, as you're saying, the goal of this program is to retain students who may seek alternative educational experiences. And quite frankly, I think that's what public education, including Argyle I S D, should be doing, not just for at-risk students, but for every student. Because every student, I don't think, I think we're moving in an area of choice in education, that we need to recognize that traditional learning experiences and environments are not what we should be just solely focused on, and that we should strive to offer the most choice for the most kids and the most families that we can.
Absolutely.
And so I think this is what this represents. I think one of the things, and I mean, that can be innovative learning, classical learning, five-day school weeks, four-day school weeks, you know, half-day programs, three days on, two days off. I think we should continue to explore those things to figure out how to offer the most choice for the most kids. Unfortunately, I think what you're gonna tell me is the state will only fund it if the student's at risk.
So what we'll tell you is the state, the state funds minutes, right? Yes. So yes, to answer your question, we don't have the opportunity to do like a three-day on, two-day off. However, there is a new Senate bill that we just talked about this morning, and we're going to be looking at that throughout next year that does allow some virtual learning, because see, they took that away from us if you didn't have a virtual school that you had gone through all that, and they closed all that off. So they had, there's a new bill that's coming out that's going to allow some of that back in, of which we can use some of this edgenuity. So it's not something you can stand up this year, but we already talked this morning about how that's gonna be something we're looking at for twenty-six, twenty-seven. For those very reasons.
That's what I wanted to say. I'm glad to see y'all thinking this way. I'm glad to see your program bring this to us, and I hope the administration continues to bring us more creative ways to offer different educational experiences for families and kids.
I've personally seen some very success, great success stories of students who would not have graduated or received a diploma that had a program like this and were able to do so. And so it's really good for kids and families, and then we are excited that we may have an opportunity to expand it beyond at-risk with this new Senate bill.
It's certainly a step in the direction of serving all students.
I was gonna say, it scares the hell out of me that I agree with Josh. I'll have to deal with that later, but the first thing I thought when Ms. Lemish was presenting was, why are we not doing this for everybody? And I assumed that because it was the way that T R C or whatever it's called, T C bill was written, that it was just for at-risk kids. So I think it's great. My question was really on the numbers. When you showed the chart and you showed online and said forty-eight, I thought that represented just the kids that went online and not the other kids that left. Is that the total number?
No, that's just the.
The total number is about a hundred and twenty students withdrew, yeah. Forty-eight of those left to go to an online program. And a lot of those, I mean, those, that's forty percent, but those represent forty-eight kids that we worked to try to keep in the district or for whatever reason.
It becomes very personal for y'all because you've been working with those kids.
Yeah, so obviously, it wouldn't have worked, this particular program wouldn't have worked for all forty-eight of those kids, but there are a lot that I can think of what has.
Yeah, I mean, would you, do you think you would have picked up any?
From the other categories?
Maybe.
Quite possibly.
Possibly.
Yeah, depending on the life circumstance they're facing.
Yeah, or the flexibility that you're now offering, right?
Right.
So I think it's great.
Dr. Quast, with this right here, like, they're doing partial day. Is there, is there still opportunity for counseling intervention or mental health services that we can provide in that day additionally to them being there? Is it strictly, you're here four hours, you gotta go?
We would, as counselors, we'd go in and check on them. Typically, these are gonna be students. We have good relationships with going in. And so just as I do with D E P, I'd go in and check on these students as well and maintain those relationships. But yes, they'd get the same services we provide to any other student. Now, they will be there part-day, so that has to, we have to keep that in mind as we're working through all of that. But yeah, they'll still be considered students of ours.
But they can, but as far as, is an extension beyond their four hours, could they be served after they left? Or are they four hours and then they, I mean, some of them I know are going to work, and that's part of the thing. They're going to jobs and things like that.
Yeah.
They could potentially receive services if they had something going on, they needed you.
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, they're just like any other student. They could come up and see us in the counseling office or make a request, just like any other student.
And that's a big thing we're seeing. I mean, kids are leaving because of anxiety, depression, and so they're leaving and they're going to an online school setting, which by the time they get to high school, a lot of times means they're home alone all day. And so from a mental health standpoint, we feel like this is a much better way to serve.
Definitely, and for those students, it works with their treatment plans pretty well.
Do you find it difficult, like, example, like, student goes to, let's say, residential treatment or inpatient treatment, and they have a program there where they can continue education? Do you feel that those patients, they're patients, sorry, I work in a treatment center, those students that are patients at a facility and then step down, like, you can collaborate, obviously with the release, to be able to continue what they've worked on there and seamlessly transition it into the curriculum here?
Yeah. I mean, one of the hopes of this program is that the students that would be going in in the temporary pathway, we would be able to coordinate with their treatment center. Right now, we're doing that, and teachers are responsible for sending work over to those students. It's putting a lot on our teachers because we are having, full disclosure, we had four go in in one day this year. And so that's a lot for our teachers and the expectations, but we also want to make sure that we're servicing them. So we're trying to facilitate that communication and help the parents along as well. But when they get back, they're typically behind, and it's really hard for them to catch up, so this could be.
It's hard to focus on healing and education at the same time, but try to do as best as you can.
Yeah, I mean, health has to come first. We have to be stable to learn.
Based on the grades that they're in, you know, some are old enough to drive, some aren't. Assuming we can't offer transportation services to students all over the district. So I mean, of those numbers you were talking about that might stay in, did that account for, you know, some of those ages and where parents may or may not be able to get the students here for that period of time?
It's juniors and seniors only, right?
We would be targeting juniors and seniors.
There may be a few that don't drive, so.
There may be, and the ones that may be outside of that, the outliers, may be the ones that are going into treatment of some sort or have a health situation. Yeah, so that would have to be worked out with the families for the time being.
And Liz, you would see this as a budget amendment change, or you've looked at, I know we had overview of budgetary impact here, but you've looked at it in depth or plan on looking at it more in depth?
Yes, we've looked at it. We've met with them earlier and talked it through. And I think the general feeling was the benefits for our students greatly offset the cost, any cost to the district. We do feel like the funding would offset the cost, but when you look at the benefit for the students, that is a definite reason to move forward.
So what would a typical day look like for a kid like this? Is it that they're staying in, over there for four hours, or they're going and then someplace else for four hours? Or how does that work if they're getting, they're getting a full school day?
Yeah, just four.
Just four.
Just four hours. That's the flexible, that's the law allows.
If they stay on it short-term. If they stay on it short-term, they will have some catch-up to do. They stay on it long-term, they've got a lot of catch-up to do.
Potentially.
And they could still graduate, but they'll probably be older when they do.
It's possible that they could graduate on time, and that's what we're working towards, is because with the self-paced, they, we could pace their individualized learning plan to a point where they could even graduate early if they need to.
Okay.
Depending on the number of credits they're deficient in.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, um, have you seen this locally at any other schools around here where it's been successful? Do you have any data on that? I mean, not specific numbers, but just in general.
Yeah, we've spoken to several different programs, um, and coming from other districts, we've seen similar, um, programs that have, you know, started up in this kinda way, but really grew over time. And the LEAP program is one in Midlothian, that we talked to their principal. And when I was in Allen ISD, we were at Eagle Academy, which ran very similar to, um, Midlothian's LEAP Academy. Yeah, it typically builds very quickly. Yeah.
It's obviously a need.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for bringing this up.
Well done, ladies. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Dr. Daniel, you guys, I'm assuming?
Yes, he is.
So this information is information only. Um, and I think our final decision, whether to bring this back next month, is gonna be pending our final resolution with House Bill Two, knowing how much money we are, um, gonna receive for our, our, our compensation plan, which you'll see later. Um, a couple of weeks ago, we received our new TRS insurance rates. Um, and again, they're set to increase anywhere from four, forty-nine dollars to a hundred and ninety-one dollars, um, per month, depending upon the type of insurance plan an employee carries. We, um, currently, the district contributes three hundred dollars per month toward insurance for people who take TRS insurance, which is about fifty-one percent, um, of our staff. So a little, little more than half. A couple of years ago, we've been, we've lagged behind other districts in our contributions. And if you remember, a couple of years ago, we did increase it to three hundred. And so, um, we're still lagging behind some of the other districts, Prosper Northwest, Lewisville. We're about the same as Carroll. Um, that's based on numbers from two years ago. And so we have a couple of options, um, we have three options, really. One is we can look at, um, an increase that you see on the screen there, fifty dollars more per month, or a hundred dollars per month, or not do anything, you know, depending upon, um, what our funding looks like.
I think I mentioned it last year, um, pretty close to one of the teachers here in the district. And she took a pay cut last year because of increased, uh, healthcare premiums, so. As long as we, you know, we're talking about helping support our teachers and our educators, so.
So you'll bring this back in July?
I'll bring it back in July.
All right, thank you.
Just a question, a quick question. In our budget workshop that we just had, was any of this included in that?
This was not, because we did not have the premiums yet.
Okay.
We didn't have that figured in.
Okay, so this would be in addition to?
Yes.
Okay.
These just came out, uh, late last week, actually.
Right, okay.
It was a last-minute add.
Policy update, this is TASB policy update one twenty-five. You've seen these throughout the year. I believe this is the third one this year. This is a, this is a baby one compared to the one that's coming soon.
It's a baby one.
It would be hundreds of pages long, I mean, really, six hundred, seven hundred pages, based on all of the new legislation that's passed. So this is the, um, just a small version of some mostly language edits and clarifications, which is what typically happens with policy updates, um, throughout the school year. Um, and so I think there's a.
If you'll click on that link in that cover sheet. No, just, uh, go back to that cover sheet and see if it'll open straight from there. See if you can open that right there.
What, what Christopher had pulled up, though, was, um, that's, that's what we get from TASB, and it's just showing you every little detail of what was changed. Um, but just kinda going over some of the highlights, if you wanna call them highlights. Can you go back?
There should be three slides.
One more? Um, there was some clarification on BDAA local with deals with, um, board advisory committees. And they've basically separated into two categories, one being an advisory committee and one being a board committee. They used to be lumped together in one policy. And so that's what BDAA local, the change is. And it, the biggest change there is that it, um, if it's a board committee, like if there's a group of you and you could form a committee, which I don't think we've done this, but, um, then district employees wouldn't be a part of a board committee. They would be part of possibly an advisory committee. So it clarifies that the superintendent, um, designates or has the authority to designate advisory committees. But, so it's basically pulling those two committees apart. You have a question?
No, I, I don't understand any of this. I mean, why are we, why are we having to update things that we don't do?
This was always, this has always been in policy, so it's just clarifying what our policy is.
Okay.
It would have been based on a legal change. They usually don't update a local unless there was a legal language change. So they probably, there was a, so they're separating an internal committee from a board committee.
Who's they?
TASB.
TASB.
They're giving us the recommendation based on that.
You don't have to accept it.
You don't?
Yeah, man.
Tell no.
We're just bringing the updates that they presented.
I appreciate that. I just, it's enough policy for me.
And then.
Local's the one you have, you have, uh, authority over. Yeah.
Um, the other thing that I'll highlight here is EI. It used to say, um, when you're looking at partial credit for student, it was, the way it was worded was combined grade for, and that's being changed to an average of for clarification. And then as far as, um, data that we keep track of, bullying, we've always kept track of bullying, but it wasn't included in the actual policy, so that's being added in FDE. And then FEC is more based on just information on attendance for credit. So there, as far as like substantial changes, it's really just, besides the board policy and the advisory, it's separating those two out. There's not much of a change to the policy itself. That will come this summer, though.
It will be a lot more. There'll be a lot of legal updates this summer, and then locals that will fall in line with it because of legislation.
Yeah, and I'm kinda, Mr. Westrow, I'm kinda like you sometimes, I'll admit. I mean, when I read these, I'm, I mean, I have to read them many, many times to figure out what's, what's the difference, right?
And so you're not necessarily recommending. The admin, is the administration recommending that we?
We are, because we, we, we use TASB for policy guidance.
But we'll get some clarity on the specific, uh, committee, the internal and the way they've got that, why they're separating it like that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Julie, please, you're next.
I mean, it's just, I don't understand why they're agreeing. It's just over.
Matt sent you solo tonight?
Matt sent me solo. Your agenda item, I think, says review, uh, financial plan, and, um, I didn't provide that. I think the lawyers did. So I apologize. We had one, and then we've gone back and we're reevaluating a little bit, um, based on legislative changes. Is that a shocker? No. Um, so, uh, as Dr. Carpenter said, there were a lot of legislative changes this session. Um, there were a number of proposed things that we were monitoring around the issuance of debt. And thankfully, most of those died, um, because they, some of them would have been catastrophic to school districts, to be honest with you. Like a twenty percent debt limitation and some other things that the, um, that the legislature was contemplating and kicking around. But, um, if you can go to the next page, SB four does have, um, some impact on, um, what you all will be able to, to, uh, or what we are evaluating right now for you all around, um, the twenty-twenty-five, uh, bond authorization, right? So again, the state legislature is proposing, uh, it will go to vote in the fall. Uh, but, um, typically, homestead exemption votes do pass ninety-five percent to zero because people see this as a tax reduction, and a hundred percent of the people will vote yes, right? Well, not a hundred, but close to. Um, because what they don't understand is how that impacts all the agencies that get these, um, that, that, for which the values are then impacted, right, um, at the, um, at the municipal level, at the school district level. And so they don't quite understand what it's doing to, um, their local municipal entities. But in the case of school districts, this hundred to a hundred and forty thousand dollar change will likely lower the TAV for the district next year. So we won't see as much of an increase. We'll see a lower increase, because every homeowner's gonna get some of that value, um, back. It will likely affect your frozen value, um, population, because many people, the last homestead change, when the we, when they adjusted the sixty, the forty to one hundred, rather, people's frozen values fell so low, they don't even pay a tax bill anymore. So if you are over sixty-five and your frozen value of your house bill, your tax bill fell below what this change would have made, there's some over sixty-five people that don't even pay local taxes anymore in school districts because of those homestead value changes. We expect that that will be the same. This is not as big as the last homestead change in twenty-twenty-three. But at forty thousand dollars, it may put a number of people below the frozen value tax bill that they would have had. Um, there is also some change to commercial properties like they did last year. I didn't have the details on that. There's so many complexities with this bill, and TEA is working out how it will implement, um, this bill. So we don't even know all the details yet. But what we understand is that, um, along with this homestead change, um, the legislature has committed to, um, make you all harmless, they'll hold you harmless, every school district for debt that is outstanding as of nine-one of twenty-twenty-five. Well, the May twenty-twenty-five authorization was not planned to be sold in twenty-twenty-five. You know, we had expected to sell that over multiple years. So debt that we would have planned to sell in twenty-six or twenty-seven, twenty-eight, or two thousand thirty will not be eligible for reimbursement from the state for how that loss of TAV revenue impacts your debt service. Does that make sense, what I'm saying? In twenty-twenty-three, when they made the change, for the first time, they did hold districts harmless for debt that was outstanding at the time of the change, nine-one of twenty-twenty-three, and debt that was authorized as of nine-one of twenty-twenty-three. So if they had done that again, your May of twenty-twenty-five election, we wouldn't be concerned about when we sold the debt, because it would all be eligible for reimbursement by the state when we finally sold it. That is not the case this year. They will only, um, reimburse you on debt that is outstanding as of nine-one of twenty-twenty-five. So we had actually talked to Dr. Wright and Liz about three weeks ago and said we're on plan to sell the debt, the way that we had talked about over multiple years. And we are going back to the drawing board. It's why I don't have a bond plan for you today, is I am working on a number of scenarios, um, in a variety of instruments and ways to try to advance the sale of some of that authorization into twenty-twenty-five.
So what the problem with that is, is if you, if you, you do, you need to try to figure out a way to sell as much of it as you can, right? Based on what they've set up.
Yeah.
But then secondly, we have to spend it in a certain amount of time.
You, you are wedged between state legislature and federal tax exempt law, which says you have to make a reasonable attestation that you can spend eighty-five percent of that money within three years. So even if we could sell it all, uh, which is a big struggle for.
Spend it all in three years.
You have to be able to spend it all, and we know we can't do that. We don't even, we hadn't even planned to spend it all in three years. If everything was glorious and golden here, we would not be spending some of it for six years. So we're, for you all, this legislative change i- is a wedge into a corner that is a little difficult to maneuver. And so we're reworking the bond plan. Um, as it says up there, the delivery date of the bonds, it will be eligible for the twenty-twenty-five. We call it ASHAE. It's the homestead exemption reimbursement. It's some big number from the state, names from the state. But we call it ASHAE for the twenty-twenty-five level. It has to be outstanding as of nine-one. And it, you have to have bonds that are payable after nine-one, and it has to be repaid a hundred percent from INS tax levy. There are some districts that are, and I don't think anyone pays anything from, non-from INS tax levy, but they're also trying to work on reducing your eligibility or your ability as a school district to like defees bonds, redeem bonds. Um, they felt like school districts were taking advantage and artificially, you know, kind of calling debt in early and prepaying it in order to save money, and that's a bad idea, according to state legislature, so.
The, the truth is, is, I mean, we need to buy land. That's a lot of bond money. Uh, we need to do capital improvements. We can front in some of that. We gotta build a baseball softball complex by twenty-twenty-seven. We can do some of that. We got a middle school, too. We might as well get started on that.
You're gonna run out of TAV.
Well, I know, that's the problem.
So right now.
I mean, I don't, I don't see as a problem in terms of like.
And they're.
Need. It's not need, it's TAV.
It's not the need and the timing of it. We could do it all. It's the TV.
It's the growth. So what we've done for, you know, the last twenty years is sell into the growth of the district. And that is gonna be harder to do this year, but we're looking at a variety of things. And I will have a bond plan in the next week or two that we will discuss with Liz and Dr. Carpenter, and we'll send to you before the meeting in July, which is the agenda date to approve the order. Again, because of this timeline, we don't have a lot of flexibility of trying to get the twenty-twenty-five bonds priced and delivered before nine-one of twenty-twenty-five. So, um, I, so I don't have the plan in front of you today, is I'm still working on it to see if we can get as much as we can sold. Right now, our target is what we were planning for in twenty-twenty-five, which was seventy-two million.
And what, what did that include now?
What?
The seventy-two million that our original plan was? What did that include?
I'm sorry, I don't, I don't have that in front of me. It was land. It, it was an elementary school, I believe.
So it was, um, the original plan for twenty-five is a little bit of planning money for middle school two, a little bit of planning for the baseball softball, the overdone elementary five, um, a small amount of capital improvements at Hilltop Sixth Grade Center and, um, three-seventy-seven. It wasn't all of it, just some of it. And then, um, the connector here at Canyon Falls and then land.
So was seventy-five mil- sorry, was seventy, thank you, was seventy-five million, um, expected to be the increase in TAV we were gonna have? Or is there more?
Uh, what we, well, we had projected growth. Um, originally, we had hoped for growth of about, well, we probably had seventeen percent, fifteen percent going into twenty-twenty-six. Preliminary values from the CAD at the hundred thousand dollar homestead exemption. We don't have a hundred and forty thousand dollar exemption values from DCAD, because the CADs can't keep up with the legislative changes either. But we expect that to probably be haircut about four and a half, five percent. That's the loss, what I'm gonna call the loss with the hundred and forty thousand dollar change. So we might only grow eight percent with the change in values.
From a hundred to a hundred and forty.
Yeah.
So what is that, what is that number?
I don't have it off the top of my head. I don't, I don't, I probably have it in a model that I didn't bring with me. I apologize.
You were projecting around fifteen percent at the hundred thousand.
But that'll probably get cut.
But you, but it looks like it's really gonna come in about twelve percent.
She said eight.
Eight, I think about eight, eight to ten percent growth.
Go to a hundred.
It's a hundred and forty thousand.
You did listen as well as I did. And then when it goes to a hundred and forty thousand, you expect that to come down to, from about twelve, thirteen percent to eight percent?
Yes.
Okay. And, and we just, we don't know what that is right now.
I don't, I don't have that number right now. We, the CAD can't, we can, we have an interpolated number that we're building off of what the change was, uh, that we get from TEA, but, uh, it's not very solid.
We have to, to your point, we have to reprioritize what we think the, the new CAD growth number's gonna be, and therefore then determine what we can spend and build or gain.
We can sell right now.
Sell now and spend three years.
Right. And so what, what we're working towards is.
Spend or commit?
It's spend.
Has to be spent or committed.
Has to be eighty-five. What you, what you make when you sell bonds for tax council, when you issue the debt, is you make a reasonable attestation that you expect to spend, spend eighty-five percent of the funds within three years. Not like, okay, well, we'll, you know, we'll plan it. It's like spend. You have got a PO out there that's got the money, kinda committed to it, you know?
Like I approved a GMP or whatever gross maximum price. Is that spending?
It's committed. It's not really spent.
It's not spent.
Yeah. So it is hard to advance projects that we had expected to fund out in thirty or thirty-one.
So they're gonna force districts, they're forcing districts to go sell bonds for money they may not need yet.
Oh, yeah. We anticipate that there will be a super strong, heavy issuance of PSF debt this summer.
And isn't that meant capped too? Sorry.
I'm sorry.
Isn't the PSF debt capped as well?
Um, right now, PSF has a lot of capacity. It'll be interesting to see if there's much less after the end of the summer, so we'll see. But PSF as a fund has a lot of capacity right now based on the new multiplier we have around with the IRS. So I don't think there's any question about eligibility. But yes, many, many districts are now looking at what their authorization is that they have. Old or new, and they're looking at selling more debt than they would have otherwise planned to sell. Because if you don't have it outstanding, you will not get that reimbursement. And it's an annual reimbursement over the life of the bonds. So if you're selling bonds for twenty years or thirty years, it's a, it's a certain percentage of reimbursement that you get for thirty years. So in my-
Is it fair to say like it's forcing fiscal irresponsibility?
No, no, because we're not, no, I don't think that. We wouldn't do something irresponsible.
I think it's just forcing people to push, to move on, to push bonds sales up into, into a current timeframe. That they, they're moving it forward when they might have sold it in a year or two or three years, but.
You know, if you're fighting inflation, you may end up going.
If we don't need the funds that we've been authorized to sell, then, then that's not a burden that's put on the taxpayers then.
Right.
Because we don't have to issue those bonds. And now, in essence, we're being forced to issue as much as you can, as quickly as you can.
We're never, we're only going to sell what we need at all times. Even if she says we need to fast forward. We're, we're only going to sell what we need. So it's not going to force us to do things we don't need.
If you can sell it, be held harmless, there's a difference between need and having to spend to maximize your hold harmless. If we think we can sell it and spend it in the three years, why wouldn't we to maximize our whole harmless?
But then don't we wind up having extra money sitting around and then we have-
Because we've committed to spend it.
Where you're earning the interest and you get penalized on some that you earn if we have too much sitting in there.
Too much interest compared to the yield.
Yeah. It may create some arbitrage issues which are,
Arbitrage, thank you.
Um, you know, where you've made more money than the yield on the bonds and you have to give some of that over earning back to the federal government. I guess it's better to earn the money and have to give some of it back to the federal government than not have the money. It is a little complicated. I don't, um, so what I should say is we're looking at trying to sell about two hundred and fifty million in two thousand and twenty-five instead of seventy-five million. It's about-
Two hundred and fifty versus seventy-five.
Seventy-five million. That's the goal. I, I, we're not sure we can get there, but that's what we're working toward. It's all of the twenty-six, twenty, twenty-five, twenty-six and twenty-seven amounts of bonds that we had scheduled in those three years. We're looking to try to sell in two thousand and twenty-five if we can make that happen. I, I'm not guaranteeing that. I, I, I'm working with kind of assumption numbers and trying to figure that out.
People to be alarmed about that. I mean, we have two hundred and fifty million dollars in projects that we should, we can do.
Oh, no, this is not anything that we didn't schedule. It's just-
And by doing them faster, you may save money.
You may save money.
You may save money. So I mean, it's not necessarily, it's not gray. It's not all doom and gloom though. If you can do it, and we have the ability to do it, let's do it.
Yeah.
And the whole thing there is that, that gap in that you do have the ability and it doesn't go above the fifty cents.
Right. Yeah, we still have to pass the fifty cent test. We still are working on getting a future TAV value that we need to get. I mean, we have a lot in play at this moment is what I would say. And so we will be back to you all with more information with a bond plan that lays out what that looks like and how that, you know, will be accomplished. And it might not be two hundred and fifty. It might only be two twenty. We're going to do what we can. That's our goal was to try to work on what was originally scheduled for twenty-five, twenty-six and twenty-seven. And we're going to have to leave the remaining authorization out past the next legislative session. So that gives us maybe a chance to convince the legislatures that they need to go back and revise some of this. And it also lets us see what, how the TAV is impacted by this change and, um, you know, work on that kind of as a phase two of the May two thousand and twenty-five authorization, so.
And we need to allocate more time for Mr. Cohen to present to you.
He had set up a lot up there.
So.
I mean, and that September one date just seems very unrealistic. I mean, they barely closed the session. We don't even understand every little nuance of all these bills. And in less than three months, you have to make that decision to do that, which has vast implications down the road in the future.
So at one point in this bill, they had it written as September one of twenty-three, I believe, and they made a change towards the end and amended it to September one of twenty-five. Had it been September one of twenty-three, that would have taken any choice out of our hands and any ability to act on that out of our hands. But they did at least bump it up to twenty-five.
I don't know if that was a typo or what.
And the reason you're, you may recommend that we sell more bond money by September of this year than we anticipated is because we would get more state aid.
Yeah, so the loss in the TAV value with the increase in the homestead exemption is supposed to be offset by hold harmless reimbursement from the state. I'm not sure you get a hundred percent. I'm not sure anyone gets a hundred percent. But I think people are getting ninety-five percent or close to what they would have gotten if TAV had, if the homestead exemption had not changed.
So the reason to do this is because you're going to get more state aid, hold harmless money. And you're also going to counter inflation potentially in cost of projects.
Yes, if you can actually execute on those projects earlier than what's in the plan right now, yes, on both sides, you could get that.
And every district is doing the same thing and there's only, if Pope was sitting here.
No, it's a ridiculous, stupid. It's an overregulation.
I don't disagree with you that there's a reason to do more than we can. And yes, we can probably find ways to do that and you're going to save money potentially by moving those projects forward. But there's, it's got to be spent. The issue is spent. If it was committed-
You have to be able to make a reasonable expectation that you can spend the money and reasonable is often in the, you know, capital plans, it's in the cash flow plan.
But isn't it fair to assume that with all the demand on construction that costs are going to go up?
Well, that varies.
And there's your savings right there.
You're going to, you're going to overcook the market for construction for sure.
And you're going to be in a delay because there's only so many of them go around. So he's right. The price is going to go up.
They think they're doing something great and they make things real complicated for you all, which is, which they're doing on many, many levels. I'm sorry.
And what problem did they, I mean, what problem did they address with this?
Um, this is all about property taxes and lowering the property taxes across the state of Texas for homeowners who feel like their property taxes are too high.
Squeeze the balloon on one end and it gets bigger on the other.
So they've done this now. This is the fourth homestead exemption change. They did one in two thousand and fifteen, one in two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-three, and now two thousand and twenty-five.
Okay.
So on two hundred million dollars, eighty-five percent, there's a hundred and seventy, that hundred and seventy million.
Yeah, we, we would have to have a plan. So as we're working through this, then we have to work internally on a plan that would actually get us to the eighty-five percent in time.
Right, okay.
Right.
You have homework to do.
We have homework to do.
Thank you, Julie. Thank you.
Thank you for speaking in English and not financially as good.
Yes. Jeff, let's go buy all the mechanicals for every building you ever had built. And then a storage facility.
If you'll kind of flip through the first few slides, I'll talk through those and then I'll let you kind of take the. There should be, you should have a, you should have a slide.
Be attached to me.
You should have had, um.
Is it the link at the top?
No, they've got, it was, it was just sent, I mean, it was sent to them directly. Um, here, let me go ahead and do this. It's all right. I'll do this right here. Uh, Blaine, you can just put it in public if you want to just do that. Then he can pull it up. It's that one right there. Perfect. Okay, so the May workshop, we visited with you all of staff compensation plan. We knew enough about House Bill Two. It has now since been signed by the governor. So I want to do just a couple of recap things before Dr. Daniel finishes talking about that. If you remember, we talked about budget priorities that we took back out to staff. If you'll go to the second slide, we talked, we took back out to the staff, let them look at some things. Class size ratios were obviously a priority. Restoration of campus support positions were a priority from, that we had to eliminate from twenty-four, twenty-five. You addressed those as a board in April with over three million dollars in teaching positions for class size ratios. And then also those campus support positions that you approved back into the budget. And so today, we're here to talk about compensation increase. And then the fourth priority was a balanced budget of which Ms. Stewart will bring back in August. And we are on track to have that. Uh, one thing I do want to share on the next slide regarding class size ratios, where we currently sit. So the, the message and the direction of the board was to fill our classrooms as much as we could and get our class sizes as low as we could before we started school. Um, and I think we have exhausted almost every classroom in every elementary campus we have. And this is where we currently sit today. It is June. And so you'll see where we were at eighteen and nineteen, we're now to twenty and twenty-one. And a couple of places, that south, I'm sorry, the west kindergarten number has gone to nineteen since this chart was made. So, um, and you've got two highlighted there. In a little bit, Dr. Daniel is going to bring an item to you that talks about requesting two additional FTEs for teachers and three contingencies for the very reason that these continue to creep up as we get closer to August. And we are almost out of classrooms. So we are trying to keep them as low as possible. This is where we are as of today, was in Skyward in the Q. And then, um, we're coming with a few more teaching positions. So there's a chance we could be asking for more teaching positions in Ju- July if we can find the space if these continue to creep up with our, our situation. But we are trying to keep them as low as possible start the year. That's where we are. So, um, you want to take it from here?
Sure.
Okay.
So at the workshop, when we talked about the compensation increases, there were two that were being funded through House Bill Two with some still unclear definitions on, I know it sounds simple to some people that may be listening, but what is a classroom teacher? But so, and it only included those that had more than two years of experience. And so our compensation package does account for those that are at year zero and two. And then another increase for all other staff who are not a part of the increase from House Bill Two. And so for year zero to two teachers, it would be a twenty-one hundred dollar increase. Three to four years, two thousand five hundred. And for five years or more, five thousand dollars. And that gets built into our teacher pay scale. It's not something we can just, you can't just tack it on as a stipend, as a one-time kind of thing. It gets built into, um, the pay plan and hopefully it continues. It should for at least two years, right?
Right, yeah. And the, the note there, um, just on Thursday of last week, TEA put out some additional guidance to clarify a few things. And that note right there, um, classroom teachers generate the increase in the years after they've completed three or five. So it's not when they're entering into that year. It's once they've completed that year. So if they have completed their fourth year, then they're the twenty-five hundred. If they've completed their fifth year, then they move into the five thousand. So that was a clarification they came out with on Thursday, um, with their publication, so. On this, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I talked a little bit about this. I'm just still the unsure. We're getting a little more clarification from TEA on a classroom teacher, whether, you know, if it's a part-time teacher, if they're a DOI teacher. If you have an instructional specialist on a campus, which we do, who is paid on a teacher pay scale, are those included? And again, we are including people on that scale even though House Bill Two only funds the definition of a teacher according to TEA.
Four more hours in instructional setting. So an instructional coach won't qualify, but an interventionist would because they're in an instructional setting. And that second bullet has been answered for us since we prepared this slide deck in the same publication. And it's not a stipend. It will actually be a pay scale, separate, a new pay scale.
And this is just an example of why the Senate bill, which mandates how you spend every dollar, is a whole lot worse and more complicated than the House bill, which said, here's your basic allotment district. You decide how you can, who, how the raises are going to be implemented.
Correct.
I mean, this slide just tells you what the problem is. And, and you know, we want to celebrate all the new funding and stuff, but how they fund it matters. And because they fund it with every dollar being earmarked, it creates all these questions. That didn't need to be the case if you just give the basic allotment. That's deserved.
It's highly regulated what we're allowed to do with it.
And it creates more government when you regulate it because you've got, the TEA is the winner.
And bullet three is another question that makes it a little more difficult. You know, do you have two, two quote teacher pay scales? Because we have teachers and librarians and instructional specialists that are paid on the teacher pay scale. So do you pull all of those people out and have a separate scale and have teachers only on one scale? Because that's the way the House Bill Two is funding. It's just the definition of a classroom teacher. And Ms. Stewart and I have a call with Tasby tomorrow to, we're talking about two pay scales or other options is what we were told. I mean, they don't even know completely. Okay, then.
And this hasn't changed, I don't believe. This is the same thing we showed you at the workshop. So we're still looking at, um, obviously the surplus amount depends on the full interpretation and implementation of House Bill Two. But right now, um, where we were from the May workshop is we're in the same spot. Now, of course, we're bringing a few positions to you tonight, but we're still looking at that one point six surplus going into next year's as she brings the budget for adoption in August. So we're bringing forward the compensation plan for consideration for staff.
Well, I'm all for it. And the reason, one of the things I like to see, and I love that chart that you showed, is it showed an emphasis on reducing class sizes. And it not only showed reducing class sizes in K through four, it showed that you're including fifth grade as an elementary school classroom that doesn't have a maximum class size. But you made, the administration went to great efforts to reduce those down into the low twenties.
Trying to get those to start out down there.
Which is, we know in certain situations creeped up to twenty-nine or thirty last year, so.
Because we started at twenty-six and twenty-seven.
So that commitment in the budget, you know, isn't an individual raise to a teacher, but it is a quality of life that you're providing them by making sure all those classes are used and there's less kids in those classes.
And I think it's important to reiterate for those that may not have seen the workshop, the board workshop from the March, where you all actually took the feedback from the staff on those budget priorities and found a way to incorporate all four of them in some form or fashion to be, you know, to meet all four priorities and didn't just pick one.
And the surplus is going to put you in a position as if enrollment increases throughout the year to address those, um, quickly.
And that's why we're carefully monitoring this summer as, as enrollments are coming in and completing inside the system. Um, the campuses have, we have a spreadsheet that they're updating, and so we're watching those. That's why those two highlighted ones, we knew we were automatically going to, if you approve the five teaching positions tonight, two of them are already allocated. And that gives us three. And then if we come July, depending on what things look like, we may have some more.
Are we saying that with doing this, we're pretty much using all the classroom space available in our buildings?
I believe so. We have just a, just a little tiny.
Look at the heads back there.
I mean, you can see, I mean, they're, and they're just, I mean.
So we looking at that dreaded portable word at some point?
We will for next year. If we're going to try to keep class sizes under control. Because we still have a whole other year before elementary five.
But there are alternatives to that. I mean, there are alternatives to that. I mean, you can reduce class sizes. You can bring in more support in the classroom.
Correct, yes, absolutely. Yes, you could put- Yes, absolutely. Yes, you could put, you could put additional teaching support inside each classroom. Yes.
We already have the answer in the back row.
Any other questions for Dr. Daniel? Why, Lynn, I'm going to abstain from action item ten A. All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve action item ten A.
So moved.
Mr. Hawksworth motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes, sir.
A second?
I heard you.
The last time I didn't hear a second, someone voted against me. So I apologize, Ms. McDowell. All right. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you.
Thank you all very much. I know our staff will be very, very excited and we will get that message out to them as soon as possible. Many of them are probably listening tonight, so thank you. Some of them are sitting out here.
They might be texting right now.
It's a far cry from two years ago, the discussions we were having.
That's a year ago.
A year ago.
Even a year ago.
All right. Now we're back to the positions we talked about.
Now back to the positions that we just alluded to earlier. We are bringing to you not as information, but as action because there's an urgency to it of the addition of five classroom teachers, two of those which will be immediately, like probably start clicking buttons to hire because they've been asking me about it.
Released.
As soon as the gavel goes.
As soon as possible. And then we'll hold the other three positions and continue to watch enrollment. And if we need one of those positions or two of those or how many, we don't have to wait for the next board meeting, we'll have those kind of, kind of on hold. So there's those five teaching positions that we're asking for. There is a diagnostician that is needed in the special education department that would be paid for out of federal funds. And then we also have included, we talked a little bit about this at our, during our safety update back in May, the need for an additional police officer specifically with the K nine unit. And there is some, quite a bit of startup cost involved in that. But like I said, it won't be, it would not be a yearly cost. Having another officer will, one, I think one of the big goals, especially with the K nine, with an additional staff member, is really trying to curtail drug use at the high school and to try to see if we can detect more of it. And the other is our police officers are, they are limited to their campus. If anybody is ever absent, then there's not a replacement. There's not, we don't have a subpool for police officers. And so many times we have campuses that are without a police officer. We sometimes send Chief Davis, he's all over the place all the time, covering, coming to meetings, meeting with the municipalities, other police departments. So it's really having that extra officer will free up some time for Chief Davis as well. But our primary goal out of all of this is the, is the drug use, is to try to help with that.
Anyone have any questions for Dr. Daniel? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve action item ten B.
So moved.
Mrs. Zard though with the motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Dr. McDowell with a second. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Daniel.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Cowan, you're the closer.
Yes. All right. So tonight, I was bringing you a proposal. This would be for a change order to the construction contract to replenish contingency funds. So this is not a request to give the contractor more money. This is the discretionary, discretionary fund we have within the contract. So that allows us to deal with, you know, unforeseens, changes, if we need to add something along the way that got missed. So it allows us the flexibility to approve those and keep the project moving. So if you recall when we brought the price in to you for the stadium and the indoor activity center, we were over the anticipated budget. So as part of the strategy and the plan, when we brought that to you, we had reevaluated our allocations that we had included for FFNE and technology, some of those things, which were not your typi, it's not your typical project. So we, we don't have as much furniture as you do in an elementary school. So we reevaluated those categories, you know, to see where we could pull funds that were already in the bond to cover the construction costs that had come in higher. It didn't cover all of it, so another part of that strategy was we looked at the interest we were going to earn and since we're in this higher yield time right now, we are actually earning more than the bond yield. And so we had projected interest in there to make up the remainder of that difference. In addition, we kind of kept our contingencies that we did include tight. We didn't want to come in here and, and overinflate that cost even more with these higher contingencies. So we came in with percentages that would be lower than you would typically see on a project of this. So during the course of the project, we have encountered a number of unforeseen conditions, things we could not have anticipated or planned for. And it has, has really eaten into that contingency, just broad categories. We had a lot of underground electrical that we located, sometimes by accident and discovered it was in the way of the foundation for the indoor activity, in the way of a fire lane. So all of these things had to be moved out of those areas so construction could continue. We did discover some, some issues with the track that we had to deal with in order to tie in new concrete to the track to have a smooth transition. And then just some general technology pieces that, that had to be coordinated. Some of them were not identified at the time the project went out. And so we had to coordinate those after the fact on some of the APs and some of those type of things. So any of these funds that are spent, you know, they go to the contractor. But anything not spent, of course, is retained by the district. And a final change order will reverse that out and delete that from their contract. So again, the contractor doesn't get this money unless we approve what it's being spent on. Just gives us the flexibility to, to keep things moving.
So you know my feelings. Accountability hasn't been there from some of the people that we've used in the past, some we may still be using today. CMAR explained to me if you're guaranteed max price and you hit a line that the architect or the as-built from the previous guy didn't show, who's that, I mean?
I mean, the architect from the previous build.
It's the same architect.
It's the same architect.
Yes. So.
They put it there.
This is where I struggle, right? So I feel like a guaranteed max price is guaranteed max price. If you miss something, you get to eat it.
This is not a guaranteed max price.
Huh?
This is not a guaranteed max price.
The stadiums.
The stadium and the indoor are not. That was, that was competitive sealed proposal method. So that puts more of the risk on us for those type of things. In, in that scenario you mentioned, that would be their responsibility if we exceeded all contingencies.
Well, if I just don't put money in the contingency, then we exceeded and it's their responsibility. Is that what you just said?
No, because this is not a guaranteed, this is not a construction manager at risk with a guaranteed maximum price. So I, I would like to say this, that a lot of what we have found, it's not something that, that the architect would be responsible for because electrical lines, you know, specifically circuits to parking lot lights, circuits to feed the baseball and softball field, it's not drawn on a plan that says you put it in here like you would see with a water line that's, that's eventually turned over to the town as a public water line. We just know point A to point B, so we have to rely on any record drawings that we do get from the last project to know where they're at.
So.
So we don't necessarily, we don't know the exact path and exactly where those utilities were buried. So that's the issue is, is we don't know that.
So when we do it, we do these projects where there are multiple phases, right? This is the third major project over here. We've got to start asking for people to tell me where you put the power lines, right?
And we, and we do, and we get those and to the best of our ability, we're checking those to make sure they're accurate, but they aren't always.
Listen, again, I don't have a problem putting money in the contingency to use things when we say, hey, we want to do a change order to do something better than we thought. But going back and spending it on things that we, like I feel somebody who did one of those projects before should be accountable for it. That's where I struggle.
So is this a project you recommended, CMAR?
It is.
And we voted for CSP?
Yes.
All of us but one?
Yeah, I don't remember the, the vote count, but.
I do.
All right.
I've never liked the project. I voted against the project and this just explains why. I mean, if you told me we were spending four hundred fifty thousand dollars and we were getting a second Jumbotron, we were getting better technology. If you told me if we didn't spend this four hundred fifty thousand and we could cut seats back, we could save money and reduce capacity, I'd be excited to hear that. And since I hear none of that, I'm not in favor. Well, I can tell you that, that I hope not to spend any of this, but the contingencies that we have remaining are getting dangerously low in order to keep the project moving. I hope we don't spend any of it. I would love to cut bathrooms. I'd love to cut seats. I'd love to cut all those things that have a more intimate, awesome, packed stadium.
All right.
Or spend four hundred fifty thousand dollars on a cool Jumbotron.
Video board.
Video board.
Two thousand twenty-five.
That's what I'd spend.
But I, I've caught.
I would spend them up, but not on moving that.
The video board.
But I, I've caught the Jumbotron too. Same time for you.
What do we have a contingency before this or that we've used or have we?
We started with a million one seventy-five across the board in all the contingencies, both projects combined. That's just kind of how my brain remembers it. And we are down to about one twenty-five at the moment.
One hundred twenty-five thousand.
And of course, now there's a lot of in and out. I mean, this is not just ten things. I mean, I'm, I'm up to about eighty items, so there's lots of credits that are going back in to help replenish it, you know, from construction VE, do things better, but then there's a lot of things we encounter or add that, you know.
But if you didn't put the four fifty in the pot, what do they do?
What do we do?
Mm-hmm.
We're going to eventually probably run into a situation where something gets stopped until we come back and, and ask for some funds for something specific at that time. So right now, we're just trying to get it in there so it's available. Again, this is not spent. There's not anything particular that I'm going to go spend some of this on tomorrow. And I hope we can continue to generate more savings and, and credits to offset any of the continued expenses.
So this is out of the balance of the twenty twenty-two funds that we currently have.
From our interest.
Interest.
Added for specific for these projects.
Yes.
Yeah.
We, we have about a million two right now in interest savings that are available to the projects that must be spent on these projects.
Within three years.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve action item ten C is presented.
So moved.
Mr. Matthew Slaton motion approved. Have a second.
Second.
Ms. Hawksworth with a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Again, for the record, I voted for CMAR. Everyone else up here voted for CSP.
And I'm not sure how that made a difference.
All right, the time is, Dr. Jordan, eight twenty-two.